I am going to call to order the town of Andover Board of Selectmen meeting, regular meeting for Monday, July 14th. I'm getting started at 7:01. Our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item two is public speak. We're going to start with Kathy and Mike Plazin.
Hi, Jeff. We have nothing to do. No, we have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, you got it. Elaine Buchart will let you go, public speak, as well as your commission report.
Yeah, yeah, sure. I guess the main, a lot of my stuff is a part of the main agenda, so I'll go ahead and reserve it for that.
Okay, you got it. David St. Laurent?
I have no comment.
Okay, Linda Fish?
All set, thanks.
Diane Griner?
Yes, hello? I hope you can hear me?
We can.
Okay, you know, technology gets away from me sometimes. I'd just like to request that all the Board of Selectmen members turn their video on. I think it's very important for the residents to be able to see our Board of Selectmen in action. So if you could turn your videos on so we can all see you, I'd appreciate that. So, thank you very much.
Okay.
Just for the record, just for the record, Jeff, Carol is traveling.
Oh, I understand. She's on the phone. Again, Diane, thank you. I don't usually comment on requests until later. So Haley Proto?
I have nothing for right now. Thank you.
Okay, Marcy Minor?
Oh, no, thank you.
Tara Tagliera? I might have said that wrong. I apologize.
I have nothing at this point.
Joanne Hebert?
All set, thank you.
Tess Grous?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Linda Derrick?
No, I'm good. I'm good for now. Thanks. Just here to talk about whatever we're going to talk about.
Okay, Kimberly Purson?
Time all set, thank you.
Sorry, Linda. Leann Hutchinson?
Yes, hi, thanks. I wanted to thank Eric for the content of his letter that's in your packet regarding the delays at the Bunker Hill Road Bridge. And I think it's a very well-worded letter. And as you can imagine, it's not fun having to go around for so many months and be concerned with emergency response times and things like that. So I'm glad to see that the town is doing this oversight. Thank you.
All right. Did I miss anyone? Okay, and just for the record, Diane, as Jeff Murray mentioned, Carol Lee is on her phone. So she will not be turning on her video during this meeting, and we'll work toward improving that in the future, but it's okay. Let's move on to item three, additions and changes agenda. Do we have anything that anyone wants to add to this agenda?
I would like to add the appointment of three additional boards and commissions: Memorial Day, Norton Fund Commission, and the Recreation Commission. Those were all sent in to the town clerk's office, and I do have all the names.
Okay, so just as a discussion of that, do we all have the names? Did they all come through in the packet? I didn't see it.
I didn't see any names, even for the two commissions that were, that are listed there. I don't see any of the names.
I think the other names were Elaine's letter. I would rather the Memorial Day, the Norton Fund, and the Rec Commission, the names come out to us in advance so that we can understand who is on those. And, you know, that's just how I, I mean, I don't have an understanding of who's on those commissions.
It's just, we had it advertised for a couple of months, and it just, everyone who's currently on would like to be reappointed.
Okay, so we'll add it to, oh, we'll add it as 4B, and we can talk about it. But anybody have a problem with 4B? Or, I'm sorry, 5C?
5C, yeah.
Be better. Typewriter. 5C, other boards, we'll call it. Anything else? Anybody else? All right, so Carol made a motion to add other boards as 5C to the agenda for Memorial Day, Norton Fund, and the Rec Commission. I'll second that. All those in favor? Wait a second, wait a second. I gotta do a new process. I apologize. I have to go through us each individually. There's been some issues with the person doing the minutes that they can't understand who's voting for what. So I gotta go through this. I'll do a quick, Anne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jeff Murray, how do you vote? No, you gotta say it.
He's muted.
Scott Purson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Carol Lee, how do you vote? Okay, and Jeff McGuire votes aye. So five, nothing. Sorry, but that's how we're going to have to do in the future. Eric has told me that because our votes have been having some problems during transcription, that we need to go individually because we won't stay at the same time.
Jeff, can we just, please, can we just raise our hand? You could say Jeff Murray's an aye, and Krame's an aye, I'm an aye, Scott Purson's an aye.
Yeah, I would rather us all do it individually, but I can, I can on certain issues that are not a problem, Jeff. How's that?
Okay, yeah, I just say, just to speed it up.
Yeah, no problem. I can, I can identify when we're going to have a problem. So anybody else want to add, anything else? Okay, so we're adding that as 5C. Item four is board and commission presentations, commission on aging, and we have Elaine Buchart here with us tonight.
Hi. I want to thank you for letting the commission on aging, you know, speak our viewpoints about what we think this senior, the community and senior center need when it comes to people running it and directing it. The center's been open for about a year. And for the last year, two directors, and they've been doing on-the-job training, basically. There really was no comprehensive list of duties that we were aware of, and both those positions have been part-time hours, not full-time. I think it's amazing what we have with that, with two full, you know, part-time people doing this. I know, and I, you know, and I know Kathy Plazin pointed out to me that originally our first director was actually learning from Kathy all of the things that she was doing for the seniors, including senior transportation, for her to incorporate into the senior center duties. And so that was done, you know, that was done. So even though I say it's a new center, it's, we've never had a center before, we've had all of these things before for seniors, including senior transportation. Now, we have an active community senior center, and most of the senior needs are being met right now. It's pretty amazing, all the things that are going on. But we do need to add community activities, and these are mainly evening and night and weekend activities, because, you know, the adults are working during the day, and the kids are in school a lot. During the summer, you know, we've got a little bit more freedom with, with kids, but it's still the parents' work. Now, there's a need for a full-time director. We feel strongly there's a need for a full-time directory who can be in charge, who can grow the center, who can stay with us, who wants to stay with us, as opposed to someone working part-time. That might not be a sustainable position. They might not be able to always work part-time. You'll find a lot more people who want a full-time job that they can stick with. Also, that person needs to direct volunteers and any part-time people that we have, working for the center. I do have in the packet a write-up, and it's quite a few things that we wrote, that talks about all the things that the community and senior center director needs to do. And we have running the day-to-day activities of the center, as well as creating new activities is needed, including coordinating lunches and the providers of those lunches, communicating all of the activities that are being offered to the town in an effective manner, combination of newsletter, website posting, Facebook page, emails, phone calls. And this requires building a current list of emails and phone numbers. For some seniors who aren't tech-savvy, phone calls are the only effective way to communicate with them. Running, scheduling, and reporting on senior and disabled transportation services, as well as maintenance of the vehicles, investigating, applying for, and reporting on any grants available for community and senior centers, plan and run senior trips, work with other centers to coordinate shared trips and activities, obtain and assign tasks to volunteers, create an efficient system to keep track of all of that above. And though this commission on aging is supportive of the needs of seniors in the town, there are a lot of community activities that need to encompass evening and night hours when kids and adults are available. And currently, the e-bike rentals are part of the senior centers, the center's director responsibility. So like I said, it's in the packet, the write-up is there. So anybody who wants to look at the pack, go ahead and see that list. But I was basically just listing it for people who hadn't seen it, so that they know. It's, it's quite a job that we're asking people to do, and I would like, we would like to see it be a full-time job. We had heard rumors that it was going to be two 19-hour positions and a 10-hour position. I'm not sure where that came from, because I haven't heard any of those discussions in public, you know, in any forums. So we just wanted to make sure that people know that we're available for questioning, you know, we'd, we'd like to have our input, and this was it. That's it. Any questions?
Okay, I'm sorry, there, I was on mute. Thank you, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Elaine or the commission on aging?
Thank you.
Thank you. I did notice that in your letter, you also had the appointments. There you go. That's, that's where that was. Okay. All right, anybody else have anything that they want to add in this area? Okay, we're going to move on to item five, item five A, commission on aging. We have a letter also from Elaine, and the commission on aging is, everyone on the current committee is signing up for the next two years. That includes Elaine Buchart, Linda Armstrong, Eleanor Scoog, Kim Hawes, Kathy Plazin as an alternate, and right now, Roberta Dougherty as an ex-official member as the municipal agent. Anybody have any issues related to those candidates? I'll make a-
The only question, the only question I have is, did Eric check with the clerk's office to see if any other names came in for those commissions? I did check today to make sure. Nobody came for the other three.
Okay.
Didn't check the other commissions? Normally, that gets forwarded to myself and Kate.
Okay. So we'll assume that since nothing got forwarded to you, there were no other requested applicants. Does anyone have any issues with any of those candidates? I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Linda Armstrong, Eleanor Scoog, Kim Hawes, Elaine Buchart as regular members of the commission on aging, and Kathy Plazin as an alternate.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Okay, so that vote was five, nothing. All the members of the board voted in favor of appointing those members.
And it was seconded by Jeff Murray.
Seconded by Jeff Murray.
What about the EDC, Jeff McGuire?
We're getting to it. It's next on the list. 5B, Economic Development Committee. In the same letter in our packet, Elaine sat there, who's also on the EDC, sat there and let us know that all the members, current members are also renewing, that be Beata Gadomski, Megan Lally, Patrick Dougherty, and Elaine Buchart. All right, and since Eric did not receive any email notifications from the town clerk's office, we're assuming there's no other applicants. So again, I'll make a motion that we appoint those four individuals to the Economic Development Committee, and that was Beata Gadomski, Megan Lally, Patrick Dougherty, and Elaine Buchart.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jeff Murray. Go ahead, Carol.
I go, yes.
Oh, she votes yes. Okay, so we're done with discussion. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
So we all voted in favor. That was a five-nothing vote, and the motion was made by Jeff McGuire and seconded by Jeff Murray.
There was an email sent to us from the Wetlands Commission.
Related to?
Who, they also had their annual meeting to elect new officers, and they're going to keep the same members.
Let's approve that next month. Let's put that in the packet and sit there. And it's kind of the same thing I would honestly do with the other, the Memorial, the Norton, and the Rec Commission.
Can we just do it? It's already, they sent it to us today.
I did not see that as I was reviewing the information. Let me go look at it.
I have, I have it if you need me to. I'll read it off if you want.
Go ahead. That would be-
The Wetlands Commission elected new chair and vice chair at the meeting last night. Supposed election member list, reappointed to another term with the commission. The chair is Duncan Fife, vice chair is Megan Lally. Members are Jed Larson, Janice Mashie, Brad Kelly, and an alternate as William Monroe.
Hey, Scott, when was that sent? Because I didn't get it either.
Exactly.
I got it. 2:30 this afternoon from Kate.
Okay. No, now I got it. I was looking for someone else.
Okay, I got it too. Yeah, I was looking for, so I didn't look for it from Kate.
Okay. I have no problem with that. So are you making a motion to appoint them, Scott?
I'm making a motion to appoint these new members. Do you want me to read them again, Jeff?
No, I got it. Chair Duncan Fife, Vice Chair Megan Lally, members Jed, William Jed Larson, and Janice Mashie, and Brad Kelly, alternate William Monroe.
Seconded.
Oh, you made the motion.
I'll second that.
Anne Krame. That's perfect.
Jeff can second it.
No, Anne Krame seconded it. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You voted for, nothing on those members. Carol, let's go through each one of these other groups. So let's start with the Memorial Day Committee. So you can make a motion, read the names, so we know what we're looking at.
Okay, so I make a motion to reappoint John McCall, Louise Goodwin, Bob Post, Kim Hawes, and Carol Lee to the Memorial Day Commission.
Who's going to second that?
I'll second it.
Jeff Murray has seconded that item. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That vote was also five, nothing. Motion made by Carol Lee, seconded by Jeff Murray on the Memorial Day Committee. Carol? Norton?
For the Norton Fund Commission, I would like to reappoint Linda Armstrong, sorry, Louise Goodwin, Charlotte Nelson, William Penn, and Heidi Lita Fonsa.
What was the last name? Heidi, Heidi what?
The-
Okay. Does anyone else know that individual? Anne? No? Okay. Heidi Lita Fonsa, as I could get. Okay. Someone want to second that?
I'll second it.
Give it to Anne this time.
Anne Krame has seconded that one. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The vote was five, nothing. The motion was made by Carol Lee and seconded by Anne Krame to appoint the Norton Commission. Carol, please make sure you get Heidi's last name and spelling to Eric. Rec Commission?
Okay, and the Rec Commission, I'd like to appoint Anne Marie, reappoint Anne Marie Dagle, Bob Post, Kim Hawes, Cindy Murray, and Carol Lee as regular members, and Linda Armstrong and Megan Lally as alternates.
I'll second it.
So that was Anne Marie Dagle, Bob Post, Carol Lee. Who is, who else?
Cynthia Murray.
Cynthia Murray?
Kim. Murray, Cynthia Murray.
And the alternate was Megan Lally?
And Linda Armstrong.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Jeff, I'm going to abstain, Jeff, I'm going to abstain from this vote. You can understand why.
So the vote was four, zero, one. Everyone, Anne Krame, Carol Lee, Scott Purson, Jeff McGuire voted in favor, and Jeff Murray abstained. Okay. We're going to move on to item six, resignations. Tom Pearl, Armentater III at Department of Public Works, resigned last month, hence the reason we're trying to fill two, an additional position. Anything else we need to deal with on that, Eric? Eric, you're on mute.
No, there's not.
Okay.
Jeff, just to give you a heads up, we did, you know, Carol Lee and Krame, Scott Purson and myself, didn't he, with Public Works last Friday? And we discussed the positions. So we have a pretty good, the hiring committee has a pretty good idea with the skill set we need going forward for the open maintainer position, and for the Public Works Director.
Okay, so just for an understanding, for the public, the hiring committee met with Public Works, and Anne Krame and Carol Lee attended?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, so I'm glad that meeting went well. I look forward to the hiring committee's recommendations. Okay, Town Administrator's Report. Eric, you're up.
Okay, so there hasn't been a ton that's changed since the report that I've submitted. The, as far as the resident trooper goes, they did catch the individual that burglarized Andover Landscaping in Andover Plaza multiple times. He burglarized, or they burglarized a number of things in a number of towns, and were caught by the Connecticut State Police. So that is that. We have had a bunch of complaints about dirt bikes on the rail trail lately. The resident trooper has a couple lines on individuals that he is questioning related to that. That's basically all I wanted to talk about, other than the items that are still on the table from the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. And they are namely, the request from the Fire Department regarding SCBA. In your packet, you'll notice there's another request from Wally Barton, that got discussed by both Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, but no action was taken. And I think you owe the Fire Department a up or down vote on that one way or the other. Both commissions do, so they know where they're going with that. I also put in the packet a preliminary financing option from M&amp;T Bank. Per the, excuse me, for the Board of Fire Commission, they're going to look at the vehicle, and I think it's South Dakota at the end of this month, do the onsite inspection of the factory, at which point the vehicle will transit to Connecticut. Still anticipating having that in place at some point in August. So we have about a month to work out the final financing arrangement. So what we need is approval by the Board of Selectmen. The town has already approved the concept of financing the vehicles, but they didn't have final terms because it was too early in the process to have that from the bank. So I put that in your packet, presuming that the board is okay with it. We will proceed with the bank and work out final terms with M&amp;T Bank. So those are the two kind of important items as far as the CIP that the Board of Selectmen needs to weigh in on. And I'll certainly answer questions about those, or any other things that the board wants to discuss. And for reference, the stuff on M&amp;T Bank starts at about page thirty-four in the packet. And the note from oh, sorry. And we seem to have put the note from the Fire Commission regarding the SCBA in the wrong spot in the packet, so my apologies for that. The only other question that I wanted to discuss as part of my report is we get money from the state of Connecticut every year back for the NIPS. Those are the little bottles of alcohol that are supposed to be going to some sort of program to alleviate litter in the town van over. And so I'm looking from ideas from the Board of Selectmen on what a reasonable method of spending that money and what your priorities are in terms of litter that you wanna see accomplished with that money. It's about three thousand dollars a year, roughly. And we need to notify the state of what we're gonna do with those funds.
Eric, you may wanna reach out to Colchester, because I was talking to somebody in Colchester, and I guess they hire students or somebody to go around the, clean up the side of the roads with the money? So they use it to pay per hour to go around and just clean up nip bottles and garbage and things? I guess it's very successful from what I've heard.
Yeah, I mean, I, we've contemplated that and then also asking reaching out to the CART program, whether any of their members wanna earn additional money by picking up roadside trash?
Yeah, I mean, we can even open to them too. It's just, I don't know how they have it structured, but I guess it's a pretty successful model, so we could, we could mirror it. Probably, you know, not have to go through too much effort in getting it going, so.
Yeah, my concern is strictly the liability of having a bunch of people on the side of the road.
Okay, well, maybe they have an answer, maybe they have an answer for that, but.
Sure.
I actually like that idea. We could sit there and spread the money around to
Groups, Boy Scouts, you know, if Boy Scouts wanna go and do a cleanup, we can get them to tip in. Donation.
Eric, I was on mute, I guess. On your report, you have a lot of initials. Can you help me out? SDS Work Plan stands for?
Oh, that's just chemical. SDS is the name of the, the I don't remember what it officially. They're, they're basically the material data safety sheets. They used to be called MSDS, and now they're called SDS.
So MSDS Sheets, God, it's a work plan. Okay, so material data, material safety data sheets is what they're called in my world. Okay.
They're not actually called that anymore. By international convention, they're now called SDS, not MSDS.
Okay, EZIQC?
So that's a procurement program that is run through the COGS, the Capital Regional Council of Governments. It's basically pre-bid contracting that a lot of towns are going to for public works projects.
Okay. Item six, you have MOAs with the union are acceptable to the union. Did you include them in the packet?
I did not include them in the packet. But I did send them to all the Board of Selectmen members prior to the meeting. Because you wanted them as early as possible to review. So I did not repeat them in the packet.
Okay. Let me look at that.
But I am looking to get those signed as soon as possible. So I was assuming if the Board of Selectmen didn't have any particular objections to them, I would sign them with the union probably tomorrow.
Okay. Let let me look at that one. Let's talk about the SCBA, the SCUBA. First of all, I thought we were in improvement of that, but the only issue that I thought was out there related to those units was how many units we were buying? And had that all been approved? So what you're saying to us is the final number never got to the Board of Finance?
Well, the final number got to the Board of Finance, but I don't think the Board of Selectmen, it seems to me per our policies that both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance need to be in agreement with the purchase. And I don't believe either board has ever actually voted on that. And I can't proceed towards authorizing any kind of purchases until that happens.
Okay. So at our next meeting, we need the final version of this, and we need to vote to approve this.
Okay.
And then it's still gonna be held off to next year because it's not in the current budget.
It's a capital item that the money is in the capital fund to fund.
It is in the capital fund. So we put there, we just have not approved its use. That's, because that's why I'm having a tough time in my memory. I'm like, I thought we approved money for this. I thought we, you're saying we haven't approved the final acquisition?
Correct. So there is sufficient money because the, the, that fund has been accruing for a while to pay for both the first payment on the fire truck and on the, and purchase the SCBA. Without any doubt, there's plenty of money to do both those things. So presuming you're going to utilize a ten-year lease and you're going to authorize the SCBA, there's currently enough money in that fund to support both. But it just needs authorization.
And then we have been saving money for this new truck at a rate equivalent to what the M&amp;T Bank payment is.
Correct.
Okay, and just for the record, what have we been saving every year for? How much?
Well, it varies from year to year, but lately we've been saving, I think it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand. I can check real quick.
And so the M&amp;T Bank number was somewhere around a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for a ten-year period?
Uh, let me look. That's in your packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a hundred and seven, a hundred, call it a hundred and eighteen thousand.
Okay. Hundred and seventeen, seven eighty, okay? All right, if you can get if you can get the final information for the SCBA, we should approve that at our next meeting. Anybody have a problem with waiting till next meeting? We're good? Okay. As far as the the M&amp;T Bank financing, is there anything that you want us to do related to that, other than you would like us to approve the potential usage of M&amp;T Bank to finance that truck? What would you like from us?
Yes, that is, this is a better deal than the other financing officer, offer. So we would prefer to use this one rather than the, the preliminary one we gave at the public meeting last spring.
Okay.
This spring.
Then I make a motion that we utilize M&amp;T Bank to finance the purchase of the fire truck for the fire, Andover Fire Department at an annual payment of one hundred seventeen thousand dollars, seven hundred and seven hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-two cents per year. All right, we'll give that one to Scott Person. He seconded that. Any further discussion on the use of M&amp;T Bank for financing? It's at a, an annual rate of four point five seven six percent. All right, no further discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, so that vote was five zero zero. Everyone was in favor. Jeff McGuire made the motion and Scott Person seconded it. Eric, there was one other item that you wanted us to address. It was the NIP money. So you're gonna come back to us with the use of a program. I mean, can we put that into the CART fund and then spend it out of the CART fund in that manner?
Oh, we certainly can. We've done it before to prop up the CART fund.
Yeah.
But the, the question is, what do you really wanna, what do you wanna accomplish with it? Pick up nip bottles?
Not just, not just nip bottles, pick up all trash.
Trash, yeah.
I mean, we're not gonna have them go out and just look for nip bottles and, you know, I wanna, I, if you're gonna do it, you should have the different neighborhoods in the community that, let's even say it's different neighborhoods in the community that people can walk reasonably well. We don't want them out on Route Six. But if they're in any other local, local road, the lake area over where Anne and Jeff live, Scott, sorry, no one will be picking up trash on Route Six in front of you.
I already pick it up.
You already pick it up. You're
I pick my trash up, yeah.
You're a good
I mean, we could structure it so they have to wear a safety vest or something like that, and then if people wanna volunteer their time picking up, maybe we use it as a donation to an organization in town. If they wanna volunteer their time for an organization, we donate out behalf of them.
I think it's a great idea. So if you can sit there and see, Eric, if, how much effort and energy that would take to implement, that would be great. And then we can use that money. But if we have to pick a place to put the money, does anyone have a problem with putting the money in the CART fund right now?
No.
Because what the, what the treasurer is asking is, is where the money coming in from the state is going in our report. So like, if you went down to the what page is it? Eighty-nine in our packet. She wants to know where to put it. Either there, in, in a revenue side of the, the P and L, or in the fund side. Right? So I say we put it in the CART fund right now. I mean, are there any, are there any restrictions in the money going in the CART fund, Eric?
Um, yeah, there's a ton of restrictions. Every bit of state money comes with a bunch of restrictions.
No, we haven't, that's what I asked. I asked, is there restrictions for the town for the CART fund?
Nope, not that I know of.
Because yes, there's state restrictions and understand that, but I wanna make sure that like if we put it in a fund and that fund had restrictions on us and we sat there and, and wanted to now take it out, and we get into issues with other residents, oh, that money went into that fund and you're not supposed to do X with it. We all just talked about utilizing it for a a a litter cleanup program, which I think Jeff Murray's idea is a great idea. We should try to implement it.
I think the CART fund money though, unless there can be a separate pocket in there, that's divided by three or four nonprofits in town who volunteer to sort the cans and bottles and then bring them to the redemption center. So just wanted to point that out.
I mean, can we, can we create a road cleanup fund or something? Just put it in there? Roadside cleanup fund?
Well, we can just do it, right now it can just sit as a sub-fund in the CART fund. That's not a big deal.
I just don't wanna create, I don't know who's the, I don't, Mike Plazzi was, but I don't know who took that over. I just don't wanna create a nightmare for whoever's got to implement those funds, if they have to start giving out money to different groups because of it. It was just, it's a lot of additional work for somebody that's very probably volunteering their time.
I'm, I'm not assuming we're gonna have somebody I mean, we would have to make a town employee, give a town employee the responsibility of managing that.
Yeah.
Can we can we just put the money in the JAL fund?
Hmm, probably not.
Okay, Ben, let's just, let's just put it into the CART fund and put a sub-fund in there, do whatever you need to do to keep that money isolated so that we can utilize it for a potential litter cleanup program. So make a motion that we authorize the treasurer to put the NIP money, another acronym, in the CART fund for use as a funding mechanism for a litter pickup program.
Second that.
Anne Kremay seconded. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor?
Just wanna make sure before we vote, we're gonna be able to pull this money out, right? Hundred percent.
Well, we just, we put it in with the caveat that it's used for a litter pickup fund, so if somebody says we can't do it, then the vote is
We just don't wanna end up putting that fund and not be able to transfer it out. It's, it's
Yeah.
We can pay anything we want out of that fund.
Okay, as long as we have the management over that fund to transfer it to wherever we move to. I just, I don't wanna get pigeonholed into putting in the CART fund and not be able to do anything with it.
Okay. So, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, that was also five nothing. Motion by Jeff McGuire, seconded by Anne Kremay. Okay. Eric, is there anything else we need to address that's coming out of your report?
Now that I know of, the big ones.
Okay. So we made a motion on the M&amp;T Bank, we made a motion on the NIP, NIP money. And we're waiting on the respirator packages for next month so that we understand exactly what we're approving. Okay?
Well, I know to resubmit those.
Okay. All right. Item eight, hold business, discuss and act upon, Community Center signage discussion. Elaine Buchard had, has been working with Art Signs out of Ellington on the Route Six signs. Art came by the town hall today and he provided a drawing of a sign that mimics the top of the, the Route Six signs for the community center wall. I sent an email to the board of members before this afternoon related to it. Just take a look at it. He has not provided us with a cost. And so if everybody can sit there and look at it graph, like visually, if they think that they're happy with it, you know, let us know. I'll be communicating with Art or Elaine will be communicating with Art, but he was nice enough to come out this afternoon and discuss it, so.
My preference is the one on the building, because it just actually marks that building as the community and senior center. If we just put it up, the circle, it's kind of general, so we don't really if you just tag that building with that sign, I kinda like it right on the side, and plus it's out of the weather as well. Because it's under the softet.
He was looking for two signs, actually. What he was saying was he wanted the, the one on the wall on the side of the building was definitely something that we needed to do. And then he was recommending one by the road because there's no I mean, but listen, the old, the fire department has a sign out in the road and the school has a sign out in the road. The town hall does not have a sign out at the road, and now with the community center, we don't have one at the, the road. I mean, if you were gonna do it, and I've, I had that discussion back and forth with him, you almost gotta do Andover Town Complex and have you know, town hall. Because if you look at the side of the town hall, which I did with Art today, it's, it doesn't say Andover Town Hall, it says Town of Andover. And underneath that is the state trooper sign. So it's something for us to think about if we want to sit there and put a sign by the road, but that wasn't what we were that, that, that was not what I was driving at with him. He, he made a presentation to put something like that at the road.
Okay, I, I just like, I like the sign on the community center, I like the illustration there, it was decent.
Yeah.
That's right.
It was very tasteful. And then you guys got my email today. Is there any way, like, these signs that we already put in, is there any way we can maintain those signs that we already have? Because the grass around that sign on Route Six, it's about knee-high right now, and it just, it does not look good. We really need to keep that trimmed and maintained.
We, we will sit there and get to that, Jeff, and I know that Yderozer is working on you, you know, she has been working with Eric you, you know, she has been working with Eric to sit there and, um, deal with beautification on that, uh, sign. I know there was some discussions with the, the state and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong. There were some discussions regarding the state, regarding a wall to go around that and they, we couldn't do it because it would create a traffic impediment. So they're working at different solutions as to what they can do around that, but that is something that hopefully gets done sooner than later and Eric, Jeff is right. Please sit there and go have the guys from Public Works go and, and, and deal with that. And while we're at it, I know that the Beautification Commission does a lot of work around the town hall, but if they could, uh, there's some areas around the town hall that could use a, a little bit of weeding and, uh, it would be beneficial. Also around the town hall, just everybody's aware, the, uh, lockers did go up. Concrete pad was poured there in the back near the, uh, in the area that we had designated during our last visit there. So when you get there, check them out. They are kind of big.
We're glad we put them over the hill.
Yeah, we're down in the corner. Uh, okay.
So who do you want to mow in front of or weed in front of town hall? You want me to ask beautification to do that? Is that what you're asking for?
Uh, I'm not asking, I mean, if you want to, you can let beautification know and if they did it, great. But if not, have the guys from Public Works do it when they're up at the town hall at some point in time. There's just, it's just a little area at the front door, Eric. I could have done it. I was going to do it, but I had to leave. So, and if you want me to, Eric, I'll go down and I'll take those weeds out there.
You're talking about the crabgrass and the weeds in the front.
Yeah, that's it. You saw it as well, so.
Yes.
If I saw it, then the community sees it, you know? Half of it, we just need to sit there and deal with ourselves. It's kind of like the hilltop on Route six, Eric. You know, I know you do it every once, every quarter. It still looks like a terrible spot. So, um, okay, we'll move on.
Are we, what are we doing with the sign now for the building? Is it going to go up like that or what?
Uh, well, we're waiting for him to give us a quote, so we all know the number related to it. And once, this was, hey, this is the potential visual. If no one has a crazy opinion about the visual, I think we goes it, it follows along the signs on Route six. The signs on Route six look nice. I think it'll, I think it'll blend in. It'll, it'll match what we've been doing, what was done on Route six. So I say we go with that design. We just got to wait for the number that he tells us and if we have to negotiate with him, we negotiate with him. And then we vote on it next meeting, so we spend the money. All right?
Why don't you just authorize it up to a certain amount of money and if it comes up less than that, then we just do it.
Well, why don't we let them come back to us and then we sit there and even if we have to sit there and, uh, send around an email, we send around an email saying this is what it is. Here's the quote. Are you in favor?
Yeah, I would, I would personally like to see a quote worked up without a dollar value assigned to it.
Me as well. Item eight B bunker hill bridge update. Leanne Hutchinson noted Eric's letter in the packet. Obviously Eric spent some delays down there. What did they, what are they telling you? Have they responded to that letter or?
Oh, they've responded. Um, you saw also in their packet, their two week proposed schedule. Um, it's really just the fact that the, the NJR themselves has been doing a good job. They have one sub, the sub that's doing the micro piles, um, has been extremely delayed. You know, at this point, it's probably not pushing the project back into a second construction season, but I'm nervous that we're starting to get close. So, um, we're all trying to hurry up the, the sub so that we get this done.
Well, in, in addition to that, there's also a pending change order. What's the status of that pending change order for fifty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars?
Uh, we don't, I haven't officially gotten the change order to sign off on. So you understand what the issue is. The CD McGuire, which is the company that designed the, uh, project to begin with, is responsible for reporting out all the material quantities in each, uh, each subcategory. They blew the estimation for the amount of structural steel, structural rebar that was needed for this project by a factor of two. Alan, the construction inspector thinks they actually only submitted it for one of the two bridge abutments, not both. Um, and as a result, there's a considerable difference between the quantity originally quoted and what was actually had to be ordered, um, for this job. That accounts for the change order. That will be paid for the state. It won't be paid by the town in the end. You know, and we've had that, that was a discussion point of the last meeting. And both the state and Connecticut DOT engineers have verified the amounts as, as a constructions inspector. So, um, the contractor isn't overbuying steel. The original designer underestimated the amount of steel that needed to go in the structure. So that's what accounts for that.
But of that fifty-one, well, this is a, this is a hundred percent project, so it.
Yep.
I guess I'm worried about something I shouldn't be. Okay.
No, it's all tax dollars. It's just not town tax dollars.
Well, in this meeting, that's what I'm worried about. On my personal side, I'm worried about what I'm paying federally and state, so.
Understood.
Okay. Uh, item, uh, eight C, the OSHA update.
Okay, so you guys all saw the information at the last meeting that we had managed to negotiate the fine uh, for our violations down to roughly half of the, well, exactly half of the original amount. So we ended up paying a total of around twenty-one hundred dollars to the state in fines for OSHA violations. Uh, subsequently, we met with, uh, the OSHA Occupational Safety Officer, the two training officers. You know, and requested their guidance on working out the work plans and the paperwork aspect of the violations. So that is ongoing. We have to rewrite a series of procedures that we had that don't meet their standards. They gave us some templates to work off of, which helps. Um, that'll take the next couple of months of, uh, time to work on. But we're well on track to meeting our final, final obligations to OSHA and to, uh, Khan OSHA. So that's well underway. You know, in the end, the fines that we paid were about an order of magnitude less than what I anticipated we would pay based on what's happened to some of our surrounding towns. So overall, we did very well with OSHA. Um, but I don't like paying anybody any money, so it still irritates me that we wrote them a check for a couple thousand bucks.
That check. The reduction in the fees and the fines is, is basically the right number. You usually only get down to fifty percent of the total. The four thousand dollars as a total in my world is pretty good. You know, the town actually did a pretty good job considering, uh, what a small town we have and where we're at and comparatively to what a town like Columbia or Hebron had to endure related to this. And this is something new because, uh, I don't think anyone on this board and Carol being engaged much more, uh, for much longer. I don't think we've ever had an OSHA inspection before. Do you remember what?
We have a public works, but we haven't at the other buildings and other entities.
How long ago?
Uh, there's notes in the file from twenty seventeen of an OSHA inspection.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, Jeff, we did very well with that. We did extremely well.
Extremely well. I mean, for people that don't understand OSHA and what they do, they, well, there's a lot of changes going on in federal government and why they came out and, you know, all that other stuff, but OSHA, when they come out, they're coming out for a reason and they're coming out to make money to pay for the, the, the inspector and all of the other costs, so they're usually not, um, lenient. They'll usually give you a fifty percent reduction in the fines as long as you're cooperating, but you know, as I told Eric, that was the best you could, if we got a four thousand dollar fine and we got a two thousand dollar reduction, that's as good as we're going to get. So.
Kudos for the corrective actions.
Yeah, exactly. The, uh, information that's in our packet related to asbestos, is that part of the OSHA findings?
That is. One of the, uh, citations we had is that none of our buildings have asbestos work plans. So we paid Mystic Air to develop asbestos work plans and do asbestos evaluations for the town buildings. Unfortunately, as you've read, uh, there was plenty of asbestos discovered as part of the project. Not that that comes as a huge surprise, but we are going to have to be aware of that in the future if we were to undertake any sort of significant renovation of the town hall. It would be in for some pretty, pretty stiff asbestos abatement.
So the primary, the primary issue, I mean, there is a lot of things in there that I'm just like, that just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. The one thing that does is the vinyl floors and the composite flooring, you're going to have to encase rather than tear up. So when it gets to the point that someone's in that situation, that this information has to be brought to them. Okay?
Jeff, every building has got that stuff. It was widely used. It's just, it's very commonplace. Um, if we have to pull tiles up, it's not a major deal. It's, it's, as long as it's not friable right now, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, and then, um, didn't we do the roof down at the, did we? We did the roof at the D, DWP, probably right when you started, Eric, right?
Correct.
Was that the roof? I mean, did we, did we encase the old roof or did we do the?
No, we tore off because we already had two layers of it. So we tore off and re-roofed, uh, that roof. So I was a little surprised to see a bunch of stuff popped up for that. I know the lower shed roofs, um, that's why when we tore down the old building with, that used to contain the, uh, uh, what do you call it? The boiler, the old boiler building. You know, everything in there contained asbestos.
Well, that's, that's, that's why I was surprised to see it on the report and that we might want to modify or have them modify the report because there are certain things in there. Now, I don't know if it makes any sense other than it's a document that stays in our file forever. But I, I did notice that and I was like, that didn't make any sense to me. So anyway.
Yeah.
So everything was sampled and tested?
No, no.
No.
They only tested.
So it was just, it was just a visual observation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It could be.
There's, there's a big difference between visual and actual testing.
Oh, no, yeah, they only tested one item.
Correct.
They tested a flooring piece.
Which all seven by, all seven by seven tiles are asbestos.
Yeah, exactly. They, they tested a brown vinyl piece of flooring is my guess.
Ninety-nine percent of chances asbestos is the seven by seven or nine by nine.
Yeah, so.
And, and all this really says is that if you go to do a significant renovation of the windows, you know, or anything like that, you have to test before proceeding because you can't, in a building of that age, there's an assumption that it's probably, uh, asbestos containing material.
Correct, but my only issue is Bryce sat there and just labeled everything. So I, I'm just saying, I, it, it, it doesn't, I understand what Jeff's saying. I understand what I would do if we were going through and doing the renovations. It's just, it's documented and it's all there.
But next to every one of them, Jeff, it says not tested.
No, I know it says not tested, but also it's there.
Presumed, presumed. It's like when I get a test, it's presumed. Until you actually sample it, it's presumed.
Yeah, but, but my, we want to tear out sheet rock in one of these buildings. We've got to have it tested. I mean, come on. So anyway, whatever, it, it, it's something for.
Yeah, because it's not the sheetrock, it's the actual.
Joint compound.
Very compound. So I've run into it before. Trust me, it's, it's, it's sticky and it's, it's not, it's not expensive to do it. We just test it if we do it. It's not a big deal.
Yeah, but the thing is, I don't want to test everything now.
No, just.
We're not testing anything.
Only we're actually going to do it.
Anything you disturb and you can become friable, you want to test.
Yeah, well, my issue is that it's all there on a list, that some of it doesn't need to be there. So, but anyway.
Yeah, anything on that list, we did, we disturbed, we should just test it and call it a day.
Okay, and we'll do it twenty years from now and the town, do we have enough money to renovate the apartment of Public Works building and?
It's not going to go anywhere sitting there where it is now.
Okay, so, uh, eight D water fountain at the Andover Museum. Eric, updates on this?
I'd hope to have the water testing back by now. The sample's been taken, but we don't have water quality testing on that, so I have nothing to report on that at this point.
Okay, uh, eight E, food truck discussion. Uh, in our packet, there was discussions as to what to charge the individual. Is the individual still in the process of doing what she would like to do or what, where?
Well, she is on Janet, uh, Stephanitis is on this call. Um, so at the last meeting, you asked me for more information on what the charges should be for a food permit either daily or longer. So I use CCM's, uh, information service, you know, and they're all over the map. Towns go from somewhere from fifty dollars a year to fifty dollars per event day. So somewhere in there is what is being charged now. The question becomes, and from my perspective is, what is your objective in doing this? Is this, are you trying to provide a service to the residents by having food trucks at events? Or are you trying to make money? And therefore, you know, that kind of, uh, leads to what you want to charge in terms of a daily or a longer term rate?
Well, we weren't trying to do anything related to this. We were, there was a proposal put in front of us that an individual would like to sit there and set up a food truck on town property. So.
Right.
It would be nice in an event if there was a food truck down at a, an athletic event or at a community event and it was potentially there. So the question is, what's a reasonable rate per day to allow someone to sit up there? I mean, in the past, I mean, when I first got on the board, there was, there was, uh, chicken, a chicken truck next to, or Andover, this, the Andover and Over is.
Andover and Over.
Yeah, I forgot. Chicken clock or clock, clock, I forgot the name.
What did they charge them?
I cannot find any paperwork on that. That was predated me. Um, I remember when Dave had the, and I remember him going through planning and zoning and getting approval. But in terms of what they charged, I have no idea.
I, I mean, listen, this is, if Janet wanted to sit there and do a truck, I would have no problem if she, she wanted to set up on town and she, knew she was coming to get a permit and the permit was fifty, a hundred dollars, you know, and, you know, she's got to make money if she's going to do this. Yes, she's providing a value to the town and the town's got to get a little bit of money for utilizing the land and if, because if we don't, we're going to have twenty food trucks there, you know, dumping all over us. So I, I have no problem. I think we do it as a, uh, we look at it, if she does it, we look at it as a, you know, we start, we start one number and then if she's successful and it's, and it's valuable to the town and the town can, she can make money and the town can make some, a little bit of money, that would be great. I don't think we need to decide it right now unless.
So are we going to make it a policy? Because we need to leave it open to everybody. We can't just leave it open to one person.
No, we do. We would need to sit there and say, this is the.
Town policy for food trucks.
If you want to set up on town property, this is it, or you want to get a permit to have a food truck in town, this is it. But we also don't do anything related to Toms, right? It is Toms, right?
Yeah, well, so. Property and Toms has gone through the zoning approval.
Zoning approval process.
Granted a permit for that food truck in that location.
Okay.
Sounds on private property.
Private property and the planning and zoning department has given them. Private property and the planning and zoning department has given him approval.
Correct.
Perfect. All good to go. So, so Janet could sit there and find private, private property within the town and set up on private property if she got the approvals from planning zone.
Correct.
Correct, but we're not discussing that.
We're discussing town property.
It's giving Janet a little bit of information.
Right.
I'm just wondering, should we set up zones or areas that we can set, food trucks can set up and then set up a fee structure and then go from there?
Sure.
I mean, we shouldn't just let everybody set up in any corner they want. Just make areas that they can set up and you want to set up there for the day, it's like some hundred dollars and.
There's only one, there's only one legitimate property and that's the field.
We can set up, you can, you can set up on Lake Road right there on the pull off.
Next to Andover, Andover, you can put one in there too.
Andover and over, and over and over. Sorry, Andover and, Andover's parking lot. That parking lot always drives me insane because you're pulling in and then you're pulling out. It's a terrible location. I mean, I, I'm, I never thought that was a good location, even when I was pulling in there to get my kids' ice cream back when they were five and six.
I mean, what about the parking lot of Lake Road?
No, we couldn't do that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, there's certain areas that your food truck's been set up and we make, we make those areas and just put a fee to it. If you want to set up through the day, that's the fee.
Okay. Why don't we sit there and for the next meeting, come back to this and address the areas that we think they would be in there? And let's discuss what we think the reasonable fee would be for someone to do that. But you gotta realize, you know, we're gonna get a lot of different potential people if it's successful.
Correct.
Okay.
Route six has got a high traffic council. It may be lucrative for somebody to set up there.
Might be lucrative for them. Yep. Okay. So let's identify the, the areas and Jeff and Scott, you know, the town, you know, where people would want to be. And then we should put it out to the public and let them have some input in that. Because obviously, you know, down at the bottom of Lake Road is, is one is the end.
Excellent spot there, yeah.
Say it again.
Excellent spot there.
Yeah, it would be an excellent spot right there.
Ball field on Sunday, Saturday mornings.
Yep.
Okay, so what guidance are you giving the applicant at this?
Together the areas that could be used for her food truck.
Who is doing that?
Well, we are, our food truck is for any food truck because we have to keep, we just can't keep it for one person. We have to open it for everybody.
So the, the discussion here is, the board is going to identify areas of interest that we could discuss and set up as a potential areas for a food truck. And Janet can communicate with the members of the board as to what she sees. So, I mean, really, there's, there's, there is the area next to Andover and Over. It's a, it's a town commuter lot. There's the, the ball field and the two different locations. And there is the area at the end of Lake Road. Is there anything else that anybody sees?
We, we don't want anything at the Veterans Park, Greg.
No, that's what we just talked about.
Veterans Monument Field.
No.
We were talking about.
No.
Veteran monument, no.
I would say that would be, no.
I know. Yeah. All right. Just so we know.
Okay. Okay, let's, for our next meeting, if there's any other areas that, in the town that people might consider, we'll talk about them.
But like, what if they're having a function up at the school or the town hall? Could have also a permit for that.
Bring, bring all the areas next meeting that you think would be viable and we'll, we'll put them on Twitter.
If you want to get together and then we can talk to the applicant and see what her thoughts are too.
Probably save a lot of time.
Yes, there are, there are thoughts and let's just, we can get this worked out for the next meeting.
Okay, eight F Andover Finest update. I, there was something in the packet, Eric. I don't know, remember where it was, but we, we have not in the past discussed committee for that. We have always discussed open applications for Andover Finest, Andover's Finest.
And then the Board of Selectment went over them by yearly.
Yeah.
Wasn't it?
Yeah, but we haven't done a very good job of listening. And we haven't done a very good job of keeping the applications, even though I know that's what it was in the packet. Is that there was, there is a list of prior applications that were provided to the town. So what we should do, Eric, is by the next meeting, get that list together and get that directly, not in the packet, but to the board of, to the board members so that we can see what's up. Okay. Nine A, discuss an act upon, senior driver coordinator. So right now, Linda Derrick is been doing that job. She has, she has graciously attended our meeting. So Linda, if you have a second, can you just give us a quick understanding of what you've been doing in that position?
Yeah.
Sorry, I put you on the spot.
No, no, I was just sort of organizing my thoughts. So, you know, people call and tell me when they need a ride. And then once a week, we put together a schedule for the drivers. And kind of hammer it out over the weekend and then go forward. There are sort of two categories. One is getting people to the events at the community center. And the other is getting people to their individual appointments. So for the month of June, we had a hundred rides to community center activities. And we had 40 or so rides to appointments. July looks like it's on the same track.
Okay.
So what?
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, so that's, you know, there's been a couple of other items like oil changes for the vehicles, insurance card. I, the, you know, the, the, the sort of fly in the ointment is that one of the drivers transitioned his primary loyalty to Bolton. Only, you know, giving us available time that he had when he wasn't working for Bolton. So that's been somewhat difficult and irregular. But we've been working with it. But we have interviews for several drivers on Wednesday morning. My understanding is that we received more applications even than we're initially interviewing. So that was really good. And what? What?
I'm so sorry. I, I keep, you are doing a good job is basically what I'm getting.
Um, well, you know, it was, it, I'm trying, I'm certainly trying to. There, there was a gap, you know, when, when Tess was fired suddenly. There was a gap of information. So still, to, to this day, people will call and say, do you have my appointment? I'm just checking to see if you have, I made it a long time ago. Do you have me down for an appointment on Wednesday? No, we don't. Because we didn't know, that just sort of was in the ethers. So luckily, most people have the kind of, you know, intuitive sense to give a call and check in. But on a rare occasion, someone will be like, you didn't come get me, but we didn't know. So that's been a, you know, I hate that really. That's awful. Nobody wants that. There's a lot of vulnerability in meeting rides to your appointments. There's a lot of uncertainty. And our drivers are really great and mostly the, the procedure is that they call people the day before to confirm and reassure. So I, I think, yeah, I think our program is great. I think we need more drivers to be reliable. And also to get around everything. There's a few things that I'm having to say no to this week, next one other drivers on vacation. So. So. Yeah. And, and, you know, personally, originally, Erica and I talked about a three month, which would take it to the middle of August. But I also said, you know, while the director role is sort of forming, I will continue to do it now that I kind of have it worked out, pretty much have it worked out. I'd continue to do it for consistency's sake before there's another or a better alternative. Rather than be just done August 15th and there's again, a gap of no one to hold that.
Okay.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you. Eric, do you have any issue extending Linda's term as senior driver coordinator?
No, I'd be happy to, to extend it for the next eight to 10 years personally.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion to do that or?
Uh, yes, we do. Who'd like to make that?
You can go ahead, Jeff. I'll second it.
You know, Bob Burbank never made a motion. You know, I, I.
You know what? I will make a motion if you would like me to.
I would love you to.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to Linda Derrick continue being the transportation coordinator. Past her original commitment of August, was it 15th?
Yeah.
Correct.
Past, past August 15th with an end date to be determined.
I'll second that.
Scott Person seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. So that was five, nothing. The motion was made by Jeff Murray and seconded by Scott Person to continue the employment of Linda Derrick in the senior transportation coordinator role. Linda, thank you very much. It's greatly appreciated, everything you do.
Yeah, thank you, Linda. I haven't heard any complaints about the transportation side, so.
Oh, go ahead.
You're doing a wonderful job, so keep it up.
You know, we have a lot of really, really, really great elder folks. Really great. It's, and I have so much gratitude to the program personally, and it's really nice to be able to support it for others.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much for stepping up and doing it.
Your thing.
Okay, Linda, thank you.
Is there any more applications for the drivers, Eric?
Well, we're gonna talk about that. Can we do that right now? So nine B senior transportation drivers. So I, I know Eric and Linda talked about it. They have some interviews related to drivers. And normally the board approves driver hiring. So Eric, what is your anticipation, number of hires you're thinking?
I want at least one. I would actually be happy to hire two more drivers since, you know, we have a, a bunch of holes in our schedule. I would be happier having four drivers on staff rather than three. You know, but it also depends on how many hours the individual, part of what we do in the interview process, one is find out whether somebody's a candidate, we even want to offer them a job. And two, understand how many hours they want to work. Because, you know, in the past, we've had drivers that only wanted to work four or five hours a week, or willing to drive and fill in. You know, and other people insisting that, you know, if they were going to do it, they needed to be working a full 20 hours a week. So our goal is to secure people that are going to work well with seniors, number one. That's the biggest priority and have the correct licenses or willing to get them fast. And number two, have the flexibility, because sometimes we only need somebody for an hour. You know, and, and that's a hard thing if, if somebody's driving in, doing a one hour run, getting paid for one hour and then driving home. So it's, it's a hard, it's always been a hard position to pill or fill because it's been so variable. So that's what we're trying to do, basically. And myself, Haley and Linda Derrick will be the three interviewing.
Okay.
Unless, of course, the board has an objection left.
Well, Eric, how many hours do we need to fill as far as just a general weekly for drivers?
Um, so right now we're making up for Ricky and Ricky pretty consistently drove about 20 hours a week. So we have about an extra 20 hours of driving a week we're trying to fill.
And also can I just add Susan Camerata is not going to continue doing the school bus gig next year. So that's a different job, but an additional one that we have to fill.
Actually, that's one the school has to fill, not we have to fill.
Uh huh.
We only provide the vehicle for that.
Oh. Okay, good to know.
All right.
So what my, my, my question is, should we, should we authorize the hiring committee to, to hire drivers up to a certain number of hours? At this meeting and then let them decide who they want to hire?
Hundred percent agree.
Okay. Because I don't want to hold this up. I want to make sure, I, I trust their judgment and let's just let them hire whoever they feel is fit for the position.
That would be perfect. That's why it was on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Jeff Murray made a motion to allow, you want to make the motion, Jeff?
Um, how many, so how many hours do we need?
So I mean, it, it varies all over the map depending on what's going on. But typically we're looking to add about 20, an extra 20 hours of driving a week in general.
So if I make a motion, that will be, that will be sufficient.
Well.
Well, going forward, it's not going to get less.
Yeah.
Right.
So what you're doing is, what you, you gotta do is you gotta just let the hiring, the, the, the hiring committee for this, hire the people that they need and then the hours will be filled in as the job.
Needed.
Yeah. So you can't really sit there and say hiring for up to 20 hours, Jeff, because you're gonna hit a, you're gonna hit a cap and then.
Well, they, they do have a budget restriction.
Well, no, they have a budget and honestly, the transportation on senior transportation has always gone over budget over the last three years.
Yeah.
Not, well, maintenance, yes, but not on the driver end of things. So we budget annually for about 2,000 hours of total driver time for the town.
Which is 40 hours a week.
Correct.
And you're saying you're about a half, you're about a half capacity right now?
Yes, we have two drivers currently. But neither of them necessarily wants to work. Neither of them is too excited about working 20 hours a week for the town. So.
So we made a motion for up to 30, to hire two drivers for up to 30 hours a week?
Eric, wasn't there something back a few years ago when there were drivers that were working 25 and 30 hours? And you cut them back to no more than 19 and a half due to MERS and health benefits?
So I, I will get into that. Yes, we restrict all the drivers that we have to working no more than 19 and a half hours per week. Because if we go over 20, we're responsible for paying them, paying into the retirement fund. And since most of them are seniors to begin with, and they're probably not going to work for the town long enough to take advantage of that, it loses money for the town and it loses money for the person and nobody gains anything. So yes, we do do that. And that is written right into the personnel policy and the driver handbook.
Okay, so Jeff, how do you want to make the motion? Is it a total? Appropriate level of staffing?
Okay. Do, do I make the motion to authorize the senior transportation hiring committee to hire the appropriate amount of drivers at the appropriate amount of staffing?
Okay, that's fine. I'll second it. Uh, further discussion. So the goal is to allow Eric, Linda and Haley to hire as quickly as possible the appropriate drivers to be able to handle the volume of rides necessary for seniors in the town of Andover. Right? That's, that's the goal. That's what we're wanting to have happen as quickly as possible. Anybody else? Okay. All right. All those in favor? Aye. Carol?
Scott, did you raise your hand?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
So I'm assuming, Carol, you said yea- So I'm assuming, Carol, you said yes, because you clicked in, clicked out?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so the vote on that motion was five, nothing. The motion was made by Jeff Murray, seconded by Jeff McGuire, and it was a five, zero, zero vote. Okay, um, we have item nine C, discuss open community and senior center position, positions. The reason why this is actually on here is because the hiring committee has met, and we want to, or, you know, there's been discussions as to splitting the position into two different positions, the senior coordinator and a community coordinator. Or have, having a one part-time, one full-time position. So the board really needs to weigh in on this, and then it will allow the committee to uh, work to finalize job descriptions, and then to move forward with interviewing and moving forward on, on that. So, um, I'm putting it out there, uh, you know, I'm opening it up for discussion, just so everybody's aware, because we heard what the Commission on Aging had to say. Carol and I are on the committee with Marcy Minor and Anne Marie Dagel. We, uh, we had meeting, we have another meeting. We just need to discuss this and have the board select one to weigh in. Any, any recommendations from the board?
What is the committee's recommendations?
Uh, well, the committee has been in debate over this, and we had discussions over it, and, uh, the initial discussion is to, uh, have two positions with 19 hours. I mean, so, um, I'll let Carol talk to the initial run of that. We've had discussions as to, uh, a full-time position replacement and have that, the- I'll, I'll speak for Carol, but in the discussions we had was that we would have a part-time person during the day for seniors, and then we would have a part-time person at night for the community and youth programs. And, um, you know, there was discussions in our meeting as to who's responsible for the building, who is the person in charge. There's a lot of different discussions as to what the position becomes, or what the positions are. And so that's as succinctly as I can break it down to everybody as to what we were looking at, and what we thought, we, we had discussions about, but, um, you know, the initial job descriptions that, uh, were provided by Carol were for two different positions for 19 hours each. And the committee had some discussions. Now, we have some issues with that position. To, to, I mean, I, I sit there and see both sides of it. I understand why you would want to have a full-time person, and the full-time person is responsible for the building and the entire project. I also understand why we would have two part-time positions, and the issues related to that, and not only potentially getting nighttime hours in place, but also sitting there and having, uh, different financial ramifications for having two 19-hour positions. But it's definitely got to be the board to decide what you want the hiring committee to move forward with.
So what's the pros to having a one full-time person?
Well, you have one full-time person that's responsible for the entire building and the entire operation, and, you know, that's the person that you have answer all the questions. So, um, you know, when you sit there and you look at a full-time position, you know, the, the issues related to the Commission on Aging, you know, you, you have, in my mind, you just have somebody that's there and answering the questions and responsible for the building. In the case of splitting it into people, who's responsible, like, who's overseeing who? So Eric is overseeing both of them, and does one have responsibility for the building? I mean, all those questions need to be answered. So-
Well, would this, would this be similar to the public works position where the full-time position would be on call? Uh, just nights, weekends, because that would, that would have to be, if it was a full-time position, that person would probably have to be on call if there was emergency in the building.
That is true.
If, if they're the responsible person, they would have to be on call.
If you, if you had functions at night, it, it would already be on the calendar, and they could juggle their hours to incorporate those hours in the evening, right? Something like that.
Yeah, if it was a full-time position, that would be my expectation.
Yeah, it would be mine also. But I, I would think that they would juggle their hours to have some hours during the day, and some hours at night if they had to be there.
Or if there was an emergency, they would have to be, they would have to be available via cell phone, or, or, you know, on, on call in case something happened.
A certain amount of-
If they're, if they're responsible for the building, they would have to be the ultimate person that would have to be responsible if something happened. So that would come with a full-time position. It was two part-time.
What would those incidents be that you're thinking that would happen?
Damage to the, damage to the building, uh, something wrong with the plumbing, you know, just anything going wrong. Kitchen issues. I mean, there's all kinds of things that could happen.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's-
I suppose there can be some, but I don't think you'd have as many problems as you would have, say, for the public works person who gets called when trees fall down, power, and snow, and all that kind of stuff.
I mean, I mean, when, when Eric, when Eric was out, when Eric was out on his medical, I mean, we had the, the bathrooms in the town hall backed up. I mean, there's, people flush um, paper towels down the toilet. I mean, those kind of things happen, and that kind of person needs to be on call in case that happens.
I suppose so. I guess, I tend to think of the, um, possibly a full-time person would be better, in that you'd probably would get more people applying for a full-time position. I don't know for sure who has applied, if anybody yet. It just seems like a full-time person would probably have more of a commitment to it than to part-time people. I still think we probably would need somewhat of a part-time person to fill in as things start to get more involved at the community center, the senior center, because you need somebody at night probably all the time.
Well, you definitely need, you definitely need a part-time person second shift, or I would call it second shift.
How many hours were allotted to that, Eric? Forty-five or forty-six or something?
So, currently, the Board of Finance budgeted $47,000 for that position.
It's not-
Which practically is not enough to really hire a full-time person. Or adequate staffing, period.
Right. I think we put in originally 60, right? Somewhere in there, yeah. Originally, they, they cut the budget.
Correct. So-
I don't know what we-
I said, there's, there, there are, um- I'm not saying you couldn't figure out how to fund a full-time position. But that was not what was, what was budgeted was a single person that was part-time, working at least 26 hours a week.
Well, listen, I, I would tell you, I'm pretty much, I, I, I believe that in the beginning, initially, that that should have been a full-time position. We should have funded it more, we should have given them more resources, and not less resources, but because of the current situation we're in now, um, I've come to the belief that it's better to split the position into two different positions. We can get more out of the positions, and financially, we can afford it. I'm sorry to say it that way, but that's the truth.
But there's nothing saying next year, we can't budget if that person that's working days wants to transition into a full, they're working out very well, and they want to transition into a full-time role. There's nothing saying that we can't put that in for next year.
Well, we can put anything into our budget and sit there and request it. It's not that our Board of Finance will approve it.
Well, the thing is, right now, we have, we have this, we just hit this budget season. And if that person that's in that part-time role, or whatever, working during the day, and, and the public sees that there's a noticeable improvement, there's things happening at the community center, and if that person comes on full-time, we can add to that, um, and, and expand it even more. I don't see any reason why that would be a long puck for us to try to get approval from the residents.
But you're not, I mean, you're hiring for two different things.
Uh, yeah, two part-time, two part-time positions.
If you're hiring somebody that's part-time with no benefits, probably you're going after somebody that's retired, or somebody that's husband makes a lot of money and just wants something to do, uh, in the day to keep them occupied. That's very different than somebody that's looking to be a career senior center director, a professional career senior center director, who's likely to stay around. You know, if you want stability at the position, I hate to say it, but you're gonna end up paying, you know, somebody, you're gonna end up doing that as a full-time position.
Understood, but we were constrained this year because of budget.
Understood, yep.
How many hours can we afford then, Eric? That's the question, I guess.
Depends what you pay them.
Well, if you sat there and you took $47,000, and someone has to be in charge. You have to put someone in. I, I, the way I looked at it is the person in the daytime shift has to be more responsible, because they have more interaction with the people within the town hall, Eric, and so on. So anyway, you, you have a person that's running the senior community, the senior programs, and then someone running the, the, the community programs, which means the sports and the gym scheduling, and the field scheduling, and those types of programs. So you really only have, you know, something in the range of, let's say, $25,000, split between the two positions each, that you could pay somebody for the 19 hours. And Carol knows, Carol had broken it all down, so Carol, if you can come off of you and speak, that would be wonderful.
Okay, so unfortunately, I don't have anything with me, and I'm trying to flip back and forth on my phone to look at things, and I'm not doing a very good job of it. So, um, you, you were there, Jeff. I gave you all, we had all the paperwork for the breakdown.
I didn't have those numbers, but I'm just sitting there going, if Eric goes, we have $27,000 budgeted for that position. There's other money that's budgeted for other line items, so we can kind of go in and, and access, you're really looking at $25,000 per position. Those are just bought-
Right, because I remember you broke down the dollar amounts when we had our first meeting, so I thought you came up with somewhere around 60 for the three, but that included the position that Linda had with doing the transportation.
I know I didn't have the numbers. Uh, I can do math, though. So if Eric is telling me I got $47,000 budgeted to that, and I've got other money sitting in, in other budgeted line items, and then, yes, you have to take out the 10, uh, the hours per week for the driver, senior driver coordinator, uh, we have to make sure everything falls into the budget. And so the question ends up being, is it part-time job or is it a full-time job? If it's two part-time jobs, that tells the committee where they need to go. If it's a full-time job, that tells the committee where it needs to go also, so.
Well, what are we budgeted for? If we're not, if we can't afford a full-time position this time, then that, then, then the answer is two part-time positions. Unless we have money that we can pull over somewhere. To fill these, and like, I don't know, if you guys, if you guys interview, if the committee interviews for these positions, and you can't find those two part-time positions, then come back to the board and say, look, we're gonna have to make this a full-time position, because we can't fill it.
What we need to do is, we need job descriptions to at least tell people what their job expectation is. So that's why we need to know what they are. If it's a full-time gig, and, listen, if it's a full-time job and it can only pay $47,000 less, the senior driver position, well, then that's even less.
No, you, you can pay the, the senior driver position out of the driver, the money that's in the driver's account. So you can, you can basically subtract that out. We'd be okay with that. Um, what you can't do is, you know, there aren't too many other things in that budget that you can really tap.
Okay.
With the, so with the volume of driving that Linda's talking about, with the numbers being up, you're saying that there's enough extra money that you put into driver's account to cover that position, too?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that that's the only practical place you can take that. And if you run over in that budget, then we figure out where to cover from somewhere else in the town. Just like we do with everything else that runs over.
Now, I remembered you did have the assistant, um, position in there, $20 an hour. I think it was 10 hours a week, if I remember. Because Jeff, I thought you came up with, when we looked at the budget, you said there was somewhere around $60,000 between the $47,000 that was budgeted, and I thought it was 20 or 23,000 for the center, community center assistant.
Carol, you do know that you were the one that came up with the numbers, and you were the one that came up with the part-time positions. You do know that, right? So I, I don't have the numbers, Carol. I'm just trying to get an answer.
No, I actually had lower, because I just did the 47 and the 6,500.
Okay.
But then there was that extra position that I hadn't figured in, that was the assistant.
Okay, so-
That was alarming.
So-
So I only figured in the two dollars, the 47 and 6,500 for the 5,300.
Okay. So again, it comes back to the same basic ballpark numbers, which is $25,000 per position if we sit there and do part-time jobs. And the real-
So, so my question is, do we need to staff the community center the same that we do during the day? Like, what's, what's the needs at night versus the needs during the day? Is it, is it 60/40? Is it 75/25? Is it 50/50? Because if it's 50/50, then we're gonna need 19/19. But if it's not, maybe it's 10/30, you know?
Well, the whole issue is that, the, the positions, right? You, you're gonna have to go. I'm just sorry. Like, there's so many issues going on related to this. You're gonna end up having to be at 19 hours per, per job for, for this current year. It, it is, it is what it is because of the situation that we've put ourselves in. And the person at night that's doing the community side of this does not have a does not have a job description, does not have an understanding of what they're doing. Uh, our current, and Carol was our past town clerk, all of the issues related to, um, uh, the programs such as basketball and those types of things were funneled through the town clerk's office. That's not gonna happen moving forward. That, that would happen with this person in this part-time position, because they would be handling the scheduling of the gymnasium, they would be handling the scheduling of, of those programs, and collecting all of the money related to those programs.
The nighttime person?
That's what I would think.
Yeah, but how many hours do we need, you know, what I'll call second shift? How many hours do we need a week second shift?
We have no idea, because we don't have any nighttime programs, Jeff.
Well, but what I'm trying to say is, can we add more, can we add more hours to the daytime program and make that a full-time position, and then keep that an assistant part-time position for nights?
It puts you into a different, and there are, there are issues that cause us to be doing it that way.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there.
As far as the basketball program and scheduling the gym, the registration will still do that. Megan Lally has been helping a lot with getting grants and things like that. Uh, we can still have the registration forms come in, and just have a folder in, have a bin in the town clerk's office, just like the Norton Fund has it, the veterans.
If we're doing, if we're doing these positions, Carol, we need to have these positions do something. So- So this, this position, sit there and do that. This position needs to be in control of the facilities for the town. It's gonna be the same, the pickleball courts come online. They need to be done in a manner that, that moves us forward. So I'm just.
I mean, I think they need to be scheduled, the fees need to be collected and, and, and people need to be scheduled for use of those courts.
Yeah. And same thing with basketball, needs to move to a different level of what we're doing. We're gonna pay these people and we're gonna sit there and ask them to do things. They can't be, they can't be uh the rec commission needs to work with these people and not these people work with the rec commission.
And that's what I said with Haley. I think, I think the rec commission needs to transition into more of an administrative direction-focused committee and then let these part-time positions execute what they want as for, as far as programs.
The rec, you're, you're right. The rec commission needs to be an idea group that says, hey, listen, we'd like to get this done for the benefit of the community. How can we work with you to get it done? And then the person that's in that role would sit there and do some legwork, would come back to the rec commission and say, we need volunteers to do X, Y, and Z. And Megan can work with this person. I have no problem with that to help set up the schedule, but.
Look at, look at attendance of all these programs. Like, if one, one program's not being attended by a couple of people, then we drop that program, we add another program. That's, that's what the rec commission should be doing is evaluating these programs and adding and deleting programs based on need and attendance.
Rec commission should be sitting there in my head, looking at programs that are going to build community involvement and working to help the people that are, and especially if you're gonna create a community center position, that community person needs to be the person running all these things and sitting there and making sure that they get executed with the help of the rec commission, but not the other way around, in my mind. So.
So Eric, what is, what's the downside of having like twenty-five and thirteen, twenty-five days and thirteen nights? What's?
You put that person into a position where they're uh, they have uh, certain benefits offered up to them and you have other financial requirements that you're gonna sit there and deal with. So, and I believe Eric, it's anybody over nineteen hours?
Anybody twenty-eight hours and over is eligible for MRF per the personnel policy. At twenty-six hours, then they're uh, offered healthcare also.
To me, it's, 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 it's like what, what the board, you know, listen, it comes down to, if we had enough money, I would sit there and say, hire uh, oh, full-time person, let him salaried position at X, Y, and Z, and then pay him the benefits and do everything. We're not in that position. We can hire somebody for, for a little bit over twenty hours and then have them be eligible for benefits and everything else. Uh, or we can sit there and, and go with this, split them into two different positions and you're gonna have to keep them both at nineteen hours in my head.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if we build this, and then the programs get built up to a point where we get here, we, we get the budget season in January, February, and the community center is taking off, and we've got all these programs that are being developed and, and the use is really high, then we have a justification to make that a full-time position.
Okay.
I, I, I think, I think those, and that's what we should tell these people, especially the person that takes up that, that nineteen-hour-a-week job. Say, look, if this gets built up to the point where it's a full-time position, it's gonna get budgeted as a full-time position extra.
Well. I, I met with Haley. She already believes it's a full-time position right now. She, she doesn't believe that she can do as much as, you know, listen, we've already taken from that position and taken the driver coordinator position and separated it.
Yep, and plus there would be another nineteen-hour position as assistant. And that position wouldn't be a second shift position, maybe totally, if there was nothing going on, those nineteen hours a week. At night, maybe that person would come in during the day and help.
Uh, Haley, Haley's discussion with me was that the software that we wanted to put in place, that we didn't put in place would create less paperwork and would make that position more efficient. So uh, that would all be beneficial. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things we could do and we, 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 we as a community honestly think small too often. This was supposed to be a full-time position when we opened the building. That's why we built the building. We wanted a full-time position in there. It was immediately cut by the board of finance and and the board of selectmen didn't do a very good job of, 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 of establishing that position and supporting them in the way that we needed to, to, to go to it. Where, where, we are, where we're at right now, it is what it is. I'm just asking and I don't wanna waste a lot more time. Um.
Okay, let's.
Is it a full-time or two?
For two, two nineteen-hour positions then. I think that's what we're at. That's what we can afford.
Okay, so is that the motion you made, Jeff?
Um, make a motion to have the search committee look for two nineteen-hour part-time positions to staff the community center.
Okay, so I'm gonna second that.
I'll second it.
Dr. Persong, seconded that. Further discussion on that? Carol, anything to add to that?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, all those in favor of uh, the motion uh, for two part-time positions? Aye.
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 Okay, so that vote was five oh, five zero zero. Um.
No, let me just add, Jeff, I will support, like I said, if this, if there, if there's a need for a full-time director there, you know, after a few months, in the next budget season, I will support it.
Oh. There's a need, Jeff. We both know it's just how we execute toward it and.
But we need, we need to show that need. We need to somehow document and show that need.
Oh, I think the need is there. I think the need has been shown. I think that you, um, I think if I got Haley's numbers correct, we have uh a hundred and eighty-five residents that have used a program within the last month. That means, that means that over ten percent of the voting population of the community has done that. And then I, I was sitting there with Haley going, and this is something that Linda Derrick might be able to help us out with. We need a, we need a roster, a voting roster of everybody that's uh, over the age of fifty-five and then over the age of sixty-five so that we can understand the volume of residents that would potentially have utilization of those, of that facility. But I also, in that discussion, she sat there and Haley told me that there's, there's an influx of people, like the people that are always in the building sit there and see new people coming on and using different services. And yes, it is a, it is a grow it and, you know, we can keep working at it and we're gonna have to, but we have to stop thinking small. It's.
We do.
I, I agree, I agree.
I do.
Well, let's, let's.
We got a wonderful building there. We should be using it the correct way.
Let's lay the bricks and get the foundation built.
And I would tell, tell the residents, if you haven't been in that building, you need to go into the building and look in the kitchen. Uh, Eric and the team have done a great job. Eric's gonna work on getting that hood installed uh, soon so that we can get um residents that want to assist in uh, senior luncheons to sit there and cook those directly in the building. I think that would be uh, wonderful. But the kitchen does look, does look really, it is, other than counter space, it looks great.
Does, yeah. It's a nice kitchen.
Nice kitchen.
So am I getting that I'm going to oversee both of these two? So I'm gonna have an additional report. I'm gonna oversee the day person in the community center and the night person? Who's in charge of the kitchen? Who's in charge of the building? Who's in charge of maintenance?
Here's, here's what we're gonna do, Eric. Because the job descriptions have not been finalized, we will work with you to finalize those job descriptions and then you can evaluate what is going on and we will take your recommendations into it. So Marcy, Anne Marie and Carol and I have an initial, have another meeting on Wednesday. We'll sit there and go through that. We do, that, that is the reason why I wanted the understanding of the jobs so that we could sit there and get with you to understand what's up. How those report things work, I would probably sit there and tell you you're, you're gonna have two reports in my, my head, but we'll sit there and work that out to your satisfaction. Okay? And actually, Eric, it might not be to your satisfaction, but we're gonna work it out to the best we possibly can. All right?
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Um. All right.
What about the software that we need for the community center? How many times are we gonna beat this?
We ought to get that.
Let's, let's sit there and bring that up at our next meeting. We gotta hire somebody that's in the position and we gotta sit there and, you know.
Well, two people plus another woman that came on, told us we needed that software. Now we have three people said we need that software. We're thinking too small.
So for the record, the board of finance lined out the budget for software for the community center, period. Not just the scheduling software. They lined out for everything, email everything. We're covering that out of the town hall's software budget because there is zero budget for that for the center.
Thank you, board of finance.
Again, we need to sit there and work with the board of finance to understand what the priorities are for the town other than just a dollar number. So we'll sit there and do a better job of that as well. So let's move on to uh, nine B, the registrar's request regarding space in the vault. Uh, Jeff, I know you had the meeting on Friday at the, the department of public works. Did you find a spot that we can put?
No, unfortunately, we did not discuss that. All of our topics pretty much uh uh revolves around the, the position. Um, so what I can do is I will, I will go down this week and, and talk to Mark and, and employees and figure something out.
Okay, you can do that, but can I ask a question? This is to Carol. Carol, why can't it go in the community?
It's supposed to go in the community center in the basement.
Then why?
I guess in the furnace, the utility room area.
Can we do that? Can we get that done this week so the registrars can have that freed space? I mean, and I'm not asking you, Carol, if it's, if Carol and the rec commission are okay with it going into the basement of the community center, Eric, can it go in the basement of the community center?
Absolutely. That's where it's supposed to be.
How about we get that done before our next meeting? And then Jeff, you don't have to.
Yeah, you can save me a trip to the ball court.
If you authorize me to move it into that facility, I will do it. It just, the rec commission has not wanted to move that. They were supposed to move it after the last open house event they had. Um, they chose to stick it right back in the ball.
Okay, so.
That's not on me.
Let's, I understood, understood. Let's just move it into the community center in the basement. We have that building for a reason. Put it up on some pallets. I don't wanna hear that.
Was there, is there a storage, like, can we get a storage box on casters or something that we can put the bounce house in and roll it and put it away?
It's already in a rolling storage container.
Okay, then it's, it's, it's settled. It's, it should be easy to store it then.
Let's go.
Okay, fine. Can we go back to one thing on, on that we didn't really discuss? Under the open community and senior center position, we're less than a month away for Haley's temp contract to be up. Since you haven't even advertised it or decided what the job descriptions are. Um, Haley has agreed to extend uh, her stay. Um, how does the board feel about that? Do you have any problem with me offering Haley a contract extension um, until such time as either she finds a different job or you uh you select the permanent person?
Let's make the motion.
Make a motion.
I, I'm fine with their performance.
Yeah. So.
To what date?
I'll make a motion that we extend uh, and, and I'm just gonna, it's Haley Proto, correct? I just wanna make sure my last name is accurate. Yes. Um, I make a motion that we extend Haley Proto, Proto's contract uh for the community center position uh, until a time where we either uh, fill then the director's position um, or she chooses to uh accept a different position.
I'll second that, Jeff.
Okay. Um, so, so that is to authorize Eric to extend that contract, right? So further discussion on that? Anybody? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Right, so that was five, nothing. Uh, motion by Jeff Maguire, seconded by Scott Persong. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um.
And I just wanna say thank you Haley for that report. It was very thorough.
Okay, um, so a um nine C, senior transportation garage.
So I threw in your packet, because I don't think you guys have seen one of these before, the initial scope of work from millennial builders. We have gone back and revised that and I asked them to value engineer it and see whether we could reduce costs. Um, so they had a structural engineer uh, review on site last week. I'm waiting on a revised proposal for them for that building. Um, obviously, it's considerably more than what we had in place for that account. Um, so if we choose to do that as a town, we're probably going to need to allocate our low SIP funding to do that. There is enough money in the low SIP fund to make up the difference, presuming we don't have to spend all that much for the asbestos abatement or the demolition. Um, I've got a strategy uh, to reduce our demo costs considerably in a contractor that's willing to work with us. So I think we're gonna be capable of doing that. Um, but it is gonna be more expensive a project than we initially anticipated three years ago.
It's all funded now. You have the money for all of it, right? The way you said, yeah.
If, if we approve the spending low SIP funds to do it, then yes.
Yeah.
Uh, and I'm not asking for that right now because I don't have a final set of costs. Um, and I will give you a final set of costs as well as a proposal is exactly where we take the money from um, when we proceed.
So, so right now, the, the proposal is four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
Right.
Sixty-three thousand dollars. Um, we have how much approved by the town?
So right now, we have three hundred and fifty thousand approved by the town.
And that was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant?
Two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant with the town match.
In the town match.
Seventy-five.
That's what we have approved at town meeting.
Correct.
So we're a hundred and ten thousand dollars short.
Well, we got one fifty in low SIP.
Yeah.
Correct. There's enough money in low SIP to cover it.
The rest of it.
Well, that's correct, but we still need to go to town meeting on that.
Do we?
Do we?
Why?
To spend low SIP funds?
Not to spend low SIP funds.
We have it in the past. I'm not saying we can't. Um, and it may be smarter for us to do that, and I'm not opposed to going back to town meeting um, with a proposal to do it.
Okay, well, we need to get the proposal finalized and this is, is this the same, uh, if, if I was reading the documentation, this is the same group that's doing? One of these groups that did this proposal is also the same group that's doing the field?
Correct.
Okay.
Gordian is paid for by, uh, Gordian gets their money from the capital region directly. The Gordian group is paid for the oversight. We're not paying for that. What we're paying for is just the price proposal summary through the program using millennial, millennium builders. Now, we are also using millennial builders for the other project also, just a di- different division of the company. Um, because one of them's more structurally oriented and one of them is more uh, designed and just ground construction oriented.
Okay. Okay, I thought I saw the same contractor.
Correct.
Um, so you're gonna get back to us with a final proposal for dollars after they review what your request was for them to reduce.
Correct.
Okay. All right, next month we'll sit there and look at that. Uh, status of the, uh, nine D, status of the field improvement?
Uh, we're awaiting a price proposal through that also.
Okay.
The field committee met with them on site. Um, they just come back and supply some additional information, which we did. Um, we should have a price proposal back from them officially within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Um, a nine uh, E, uh, the status of grants that was in our packet. If you could give us a brief rundown of that and some timelines on those grant?
Sure. So just the big ones, the steep twenty-twenty-two grant, there's, there's a lot of little grants here. Sure. So just the big ones, the steep 2022 grant, there's, there's a lot of little grants here that are not reflected in this document, but the 2022 steep grant for the public transportation. That was 275 plus 75 town match. So, and again, with the assumption that we're gonna augment that with low SIP funding to get what true construction costs are. I mean, one of the biggest problems we ran into that is that we did not bid that out originally as a prevailing wage job. And we've been forced from the state to make that a prevailing wage job. We can get to demo pretty quickly. So the assumption is asbestos and asbestos abatement and demo this fall. And giving them a clean slate to work with. I don't know whether they could fit this project in late in the winter. They were late in the fall. I don't want to pour concrete when it's cold. So if it doesn't look like we can get them in and pouring concrete in November, then we would be looking at delaying construction till spring for that. Rec field improvements. So we're quite far along in that project. And we're still looking at potentially fall construction season with millennial builders on that. This is right in their wheelhouse. I looked at a number, well, I looked at one field that they constructed under the same project or the same type of project. So I have no doubt they can do it. The question is just how much bang for our buck can we get? So once we get the initial proposal back, we will be adjusting our scope to kind of maximize the dollars we have for that project. The next up is Fed Local Bridge Program. That's the first one is Bunker Hill Bridge. Construction's about 30% complete. We should still be on schedule for December completion of this year. That's certainly my intention. And we're pushing the contractor to make that deadline. So starting next spring will be the federal local bridge program for Long Hill Road over the Hop River. Again, this is about a four and a half million dollar project that ultimately will not come out of Anover taxpayer dollars. However, like the Bunker Hill Bridge, we have to pay the contractor in the construction inspection and then get rebated by the state and federal government. But they are in the end 100% funded. So right now the RFP is out as of the 11th for the construction management and inspection. That will be reviewed in August. That because it's directly a project that involves a lot of state dollars and it's being run under design managed by state. They have pretty strict criteria for who can be on the evaluation team for both construction inspection as well as the evaluation. So basically it will come down to four engineers plus me will be on the committee for, one will be the state. We'll use probably Todd Penny, which is a, a guy in Coventry. And then Tom Weldon, who's the guy that's our liaison from what was close Jensen and Miller. So that one's going pretty well. We've ironed out most of the details. We should have a finalized design for that in about 14 days. So that's the Long Hill Road Bridge. Lot SIP. So as most of you know, we applied to Lot SIP for funding for the pathway down Route 316 and School Street. We do have 100% of the construction funding secured. But we don't right now have the the full funding for the design phase of that project. The design is underway. We're basically at the 60% design phase for that project. And I'm hoping, well, actually I was hoping to have it by today, but I don't have it. The list back from the designer as to what the total cost to complete the the design for that project. So that's a basically a $2.9 million grant that's still floating out there. State Local Bridge Program. The next up to replace is the Lake Road Bridge over over Cheney Brook, which is at Basola. That will use, that will be pushed off to the 2027 construction season. The ConDOT has already agreed to a one-year extension for that. We're at the 70% design phase. We've had the utility coordination meeting for that. The, the hard part of that is that's going to take a series of construction easements. We will have to do a temporary relocation of the entrance to Basola Road from Lake Road. So that will be a little invasive when we start that. And I've already met with Dennis O'Brien and the contractor on that a little bit. The contractor is, we're waiting to get back from him what the limits and get easement maps for him. So we can start pursuing the, the construction easements for that. So.
That project says 1.8 million dollar project?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Nothing cheap. And then we're still waiting a final contract to sign regarding the DEP Rec Trails Grant. That is for the pathway that roughly follows the Percy Cook Trail and connects the municipal campus to the rail trail. And that is a design only fund. Already went through town meeting. The contractor has stated that they will, because they are, uh, the delay right now in getting me the the final contract, that they will honor what they agreed to for a price a couple of years ago when we first submitted that. We did receive a legislative appropriation this year of $250,000 for this fiscal year and another $250,000 for next fiscal year. We're still waiting on the funding authorization in which state agency that money is going to be assigned for. That money is earmarked for recreational field improvements. And this year's allocation will be used to augment the steep funding for Pickle Bough Playground in those improvements. You know, and then we need to have a conversation about what we're going to do with next year's allotment of funding also. So other grants that are still out there, we have not heard back our grant submission to DOT for a new handicapped accessible van. We should get that notification sometime in the fall, whether we're going to get it. Judging by our past grant submissions, we rarely get those on the first round. So I would expect we won't get it. But we'll reapply you know, next April. So there's a good chance we'll get it in the second grant authorization. I mean, there's still some chance we'll get it, but it's, it's far from a guaranteed. Federal congressional appropriation. We initially requested money from the federal government through Mr. Murphy's office. Senator Murphy's office. It made it through the Senate Appropriation Commission or Senate Appropriation Committee in the last fiscal year. And then the way the budget occurred, there were no appropriations for any congressional or senatorial appropriations approved. So nothing got approved. The Senate has said those those that made it through the Senate appropriations the previous year will be prioritized. And this year's grant applications through the congressional appropriations. We have fully resubmitted it on time this year through Senator Murphy's office. Again, you know, we won't know till the earliest we'll know in October if they actually pass a budget next year. You know, but most years it's considerably later than that. So the last thing up is low SIP funds. So we still have approximately $70,000 left in the old reimbursement program that we haven't spent. And we have an additional $82,000 that's actually in our town Losip account now. So those are available for projects that go through the CIP and approval process. So my assumption at this point is we're going to spend all of that money for the senior transportation garage. Looking forward, it looks like there will be another round of TRIP, which is Transportation Rural Improvement Funds this year. I've been working a little bit with the town planner. I think probably what we're going to try to do is we're going to probably try to submit a TRIP grant for repairing one of the other culverts. The advantage of TRIP is that it's an 80% match. So that you know, that's a lot better than the, the state local bridge program, which is a 50/50 match. And that's pretty much where we are on grants unless you have any other questions for me.
Is there a limit on the TRIP dollars?
Hmm, yes. It's more than a million. I think it's a million five. But I'm not positive.
All of our culverts need to go through that then.
Well.
I mean, because even at 1.8, if I get 80% of, of 1.5, I'd end up with more money.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for that report. That was very helpful and it allows the residents to understand where you're at. The timing on those programs, just so I get it. You're thinking that this year you're going to do the demolition on the, oh, the old firehouse. And the field is going to get started this year.
So the. I'm hoping the field gets started this year. But I'm an optimist.
Scott, the Field Commission and the Field Committee, you're expecting the field to get started this fall?
I'm an optimist.
Okay. All right. Well, let's make that an actionable thing. So optimists and.
I'd like to see the garage pushed through. I'm sure the whole board wants to see that thing done.
Well, that's, that's why the request was to sit there and have these grants out here because what we need to do is you know, Eric's got a lot on his plate. We've forced a lot on him. He's got a lot more that's on him. But on these grants, we need to sit there and make sure that certain things happen. So in my head, the field and then the old firehouse project need to get done. And the old firehouse getting done would solve a lot of issues. You know, you'd store the the town vehicles. It would hopefully give us some storage, even though extra money. I think it would be beneficial to the, to the community. And then obviously all of the bridges and all that stuff are just problematic, but they need to get done. So, and Eric, great job. Identifying all those funding options. So that the taxpayers don't have to fund all of it. So.
Don't know what we do without you, Eric.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Yeah.
No problem.
Okay, so we're going to move on to item 10, approval of minute meetings. We had minutes in there for six, nine, 2025, a regular meeting, six, 12, 2025. We had a special meeting, six, 18, 2025. We had a special meeting and six, 26, 2025, we had a special meeting. We're never going to do that again, are we?
Hopefully not.
Okay, that's perfect. So I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for six, nine, six, 12, six, 18, and six, 26.
Seconded, Jeff.
Scott, any further discussions? Anybody have any changes they want to make to those minutes? Carol? No? All right. All those in favor? I.
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 I'm going to abstain because I was, I was not at some of those meetings. So since we approved them as a group, I'll just abstain.
Okay, so the vote, the motion to approve those minutes was made by Jeff McGuire, seconded by Scott Person. There were four votes in favor. Dan May, Scott Person, Carol Lee, Jeff McGuire, and Jeff Murray abstained. Okay, there were multiple reports in our package, the Treasurer's Report. Anybody have any questions? Any issues related to the Treasurer's Report? Okay, anybody have any issues related to the Tax Collector's Report? Is there anything that we need to plural about the Tax Collector's side? Let's see, one second on the Tax Collector.
A lot of people paid their back taxes.
Just so everybody knows, there will be a tax foreclosure sale, I believe Wednesday for the remaining two properties in the tax sale. Everybody else came up and, and paid their bills before that.
Okay.
July 16th is the tax sale.
Okay. So July 16th at 1:00 PM, there is a and that is held at the Town Hall in the community room.
That is correct. So you can come bid on properties if you'd like.
Okay. Did we have anything to approve? Yes, we do. So we have three tax refunds totaling $294.05. Anybody have any other questions? Any of the tax sale issues or anything else related to Tax Collector's Report? Okay, on page 120, there are the three tax refunds in the package Toyota Lease Trust, Mark Lunta, and Sherry Palmer, in a total of $294.05. So I'll make a motion that we approve the tax refunds in the total of $294.05 dated July 8th, 2025.
Seconded.
Right. All those in favor?
Right.
I.
Right. So that vote was five, nothing. Motion made by Jeff McGuire, seconded by Jeff Murray. Any of the other department reports that anyone wants to have any issues or discussions on?
I think the only thing that the board should consider is several months ago, the board had wanted to generate their own registration form for community groups to book the community center. We haven't really gotten anything back from that. You had been given a couple of different options, but I don't think either of those were acceptable to the board. I don't know whether the board's made any progress. Haley put in a event rental rate that she thinks is appropriate for the community center. I think that would be something to consider approving. And then ultimately we still need an actual request form. I know I thought Carol and Jeff maybe were working on that, but I don't know what the status of that is. We still don't have any real way for, for an Anover resident to rent the facility.
Those event rates don't, don't bother me. They look reasonable. They're on page 122 and 123. The kitchen, the kitchen we're going to have to talk about because I think if you went and got a commercial kitchen rental somewhere else, I think it's a lot more expensive. So that's something. So maybe what we do is push this to another next month and we look at that. But I do think we look, need to look at commercial, commercial kitchen rental. Because I'm assuming Eric, you're going to have certification for that. Isn't that accurate?
Any safe serve, correct?
Safe serve is for us serving the food.
Yeah, what about for, what about for serving? What about for, what about for serving a function? For the family members? Does it have to be?
I have no idea, to be perfectly honest.
Yeah, we're going to have to look at that, but I what I'm after is is our kitchen a commercial certified as a commercial kitchen and can be used for someone for a commercial venue, so they would come and use the kitchen for fifty dollars per use. That's too, that's too low. We got to look at that one. So everybody look at those fees and let's come back to that next month. But Haley, thank you for putting that together.
Yeah, they look reasonable.
Yep. I mean, the only one I have a problem with it honestly is the kitchen.
Yeah, I mean, that that's that's something we should definitely look at.
She probably put that because it's not completely in use yet, like she said, for warming, serving, or light prep. When it is available for more, maybe then we raise the price.
But do we really want outside groups coming in and cooking full meals in there? I don't think so.
Cleaning, any other issues? So let's bring that up at our next meeting. So anybody else have any of the the issues in any of the departmental reports? All right, if not, then let's move on to item fourteen, correspondence. Eric, you said there was a CROG summary. What page does that start on? Just so everybody's aware.
So the only thing that the first thing we really had, I think, that you should be aware of as a board is that the SEEMERS program, they're supposedly within the next year will have the the retirement two point O program available. That would only be available for new higher workers. You know, but it does, it would offer the town some pretty significant savings in future enrollees. Because as many of you know, of the, so we as a town put in sixteen percent for an employee, but only about five and a half percent of that goes into the actual retirement account for that individual. The rest is just simply there to pay for the fact that they didn't collect enough money for many, many years, and they ran the program in the hole. So SEEMERS two point O or MERS two point O shouldn't have that additional, you know, almost ten percent cost add or on. There will be a new benefit structure that is outlined on the agreement. But that is what what they're looking at doing. That's been a request for quite a while. So that's what I wanted to put put in there and kind of bring to your attention for correspondence. Sorry, it wasn't really a CROG summary. It's a MERS summary.
Yeah. So you're saying in two point O, as opposed to paying what we're currently paying, we're going to pay five point two five percent?
Well, we don't know yet, but it will be considerably less expensive because it won't be accounting for that overhead, that legacy overhead that the previous program is dealing with.
But for all of our existing employees, we're going to be under MERS one point O. So we're going to have a whole calculation issue. You're going to have to calculate your your MERS on the older employees based upon the old rate.
Correct.
And new employees on the new rate.
Correct. Yes, that is the case.
That'll that'll work out well.
I mean, the town certainly could opt to keep all the the new employees in the old program, too. It just seems like it's a considerably more expensive program. I mean, if it was up to me, we'd just go for, you know, defined contribution plans, but that doesn't seem to be an option available to us.
Okay. Anybody have anything they want to discuss? Anything else? If not, we're going to move on to public speak. Anybody? Okay, Marcy Minor.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to find out if it was an option to when we're on the advertising for the position for the director, if we could possibly. I don't know how to say this. I was trying to suggest that we keep it open. Maybe if we hired somebody, you know, like one person, maybe thirty hour weeks for this first year. Just to try to get our feet, you know, get everything. I don't know. I'm sorry, I'm tired. I guess we'll talk during our meeting.
Join the club. Thank you. Leanne Bucar.
Yeah, I had a few things. Way back to the whole discussion about the NIP money. I'm I'm one of the organizations on CART and I'm with SERP. There's four of us. We've got the church, the food pantry, the Cub Scouts, and SERP. And Don Londonberg is in charge of CART now. And that money that we have comes from the Redemption Center. They send the money. It goes to the treasurer. And then the treasurer splits it up among the four organizations twice a year and sends us checks. So the NIP money would definitely have to be separate, kept track of separates, so that nobody starts splitting that out among our four groups. So that's like the only stipulation there. I did have an idea that maybe that money from the NIPS could actually be taken care of by the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving Group. Have a separate little fund there and maybe some community members will come up with a good idea or project to go ahead and clean up the streets in Andover. I know El Poa does Earth Day cleanup, and I think they might have another time during the year that volunteers all organize and go ahead and clean up around the lake. So something, something like that. But it seems like it's more in the purview of the Hartford Foundation of Public Giving. But there are many stipulations on spending that money and how to dole out that money that comes from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, so maybe something separate. Also, the discussion about the the signs and what's around the signs, the welcome sign. And I noticed Kathy Droshur is not on the meeting and she is in charge of the Beautification Committee. And she got a grant, she got money from the Hartford Foundation for Giving to do a nice wall around the welcome sign. But then we had a snag that the state of Connecticut does not want anything that would kill someone if a car came up and hit it. So they need a breakaway. They they want a breakaway thing around the sign and the posts themselves. And that wood would be fine, but a rock wall is a no go. So Kathy is back to the drawing board redesigning what we can put around the two signs, the one that exists and the new one that's going to go up. But just wanted to go ahead and give you a heads up about that. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Stephen King.
Can you hear me okay?
You can.
All right. Hey, congratulations, Carol. I've been away for a while. I apologize. I'm back. I'll be back for the for the duration. I'm sure a couple of people are probably disappointed about that. Sorry, Jeff, but I have a very serious issue that I got to raise tonight. As if you're unaware, I'm a federally licensed firearms dealer, daily in Title I and Title II firearms, chairman of the Andover Sportsmen's Club, I'm the chief range safety officer, former president and current vice president of the Connecticut Gun Guild, which holds a seat by statute on the Board of Firearms Permit Examiners. I was apprised today that from an NCON officer who is on this meeting tonight that Andover is denying acceptance of pistol permit applications from residents. I want to let Andover know that although you can refuse to issue a permit to a resident, you cannot deny acceptance. That is a violation of Connecticut law and also not only the Second Amendment, but possibly the Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. It opens you up to a huge lawsuit. So please, you need to figure this out pretty quickly. You got to start accepting applications. Applications can be accepted by the chief law enforcement officer, which is either you, Jeff. Brett Cook apparently has said that he cannot process any. But Jeff, you can also designate somebody, whether it be Eric or somebody else within your staff to accept applications. If you need help, I'd be more than happy to help you guys with this, but you need to start accepting applications.
I already had a conversation today with the the town clerk. We we realized we're legally obligated to do it. As much as I don't really like signing for them, we will.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Again, if you need any help, advice, whatever. People come to me all the time asking for advice on federal, state, local laws and whatever because of what I do and my knowledge, so I'd be more than happy to help you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, Joanne Heber.
Okay, I have a couple of things that I wanted to talk about, too, just real quick. First of all, I'm really happy to see that memo that Eric had in the packet about the MERS two point O possibly coming into being next year. I think that will save the town on a tremendous amount of money. Like Eric said, it sounds like you're paying a lot of administrative fees and town taxpayer dollars are going to fund a program that's not fully funded. So if it ends up being like five percent for the employee retirement, it'll be so helpful. So very glad to hear that. I'm also really in support of hiring two people for the Senior Community Center, plus allowing someone to be the transportation coordinator. I just think at this time, it it would be overwhelming, as we found out, not that the person was overwhelmed, but because of the lack of direction or a brand new building or what it was supposed to be, I think you can bring in people that can specialize in certain aspects of the senior center, community center, all the while, again, saving the money for not paying benefits just yet. As Jeff Murray said, and Carol, I think as well, if it grows into something bigger and it's very busy, well, then it can morph into a full-time position with benefits and have better direction. I love that they've taken hold of the transportation. It seems to be going well. I think if you have ten hours to spend on something a week and you're focused, you just come in and get the job done. I think eighteen, two other nineteen hour positions, if needed, can do the same thing with various aspects. So I'm in full favor of that. I don't see it as a negative at all as we grow and as it becomes busier. The other thing that I just wanted to mention real quick is one of the items two on your agenda tonight mentioned. Some memo of understanding or MOAs, memo of agreement, memo of understanding with unions for something that's going to happen. I don't think you should have said what's going to happen. I don't think we need to hear the particulars of someone's personnel agreement. But I think it would be transparent if we're finding a need, usually an MOA or an MOU, is to pay someone additional funds to do additional work or to give them more duties. I think the town should have just been told, hey, this is what's happening. Since you talked about it, you all said, oh, we're going to look at our memo. We're going to look at this. I personally would have liked to hear what it is. I'm glad you're following all the union things as the town, and I just think we have a right to know if if there's new duties coming on for someone or it would have been good to hear. Thank you.
Pescas.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Kimberly Person.
Um, I I know it's late, so I'm not going to say too much, but I will send a selectman an email tomorrow. I really want to off offer my services to the community center and for free, just help you guys out with figuring all the staffing out and the hours, et cetera. So it's so late. I don't need to talk about it tonight, but I'll send you guys an email tomorrow.
All right, Leanne Hutchinson.
Yes, hi. Elaine sort of asked what I was going to ask, to some extent anyway, about the NIP money. This was the first I learned about it, and I, it's my understanding that money that comes from the five cent deposit comes back to the municipality, and then that's where this money that came from tonight that you're talking about, that's where it came from in the first place. So I wasn't sure if you were actually forming a group to join the four groups that now make up CART and putting this money in to the money that they collect, as Elaine described, is distributed twice a year. So I guess I'm still not completely sure what the status of it is, and maybe it hasn't been determined because she also talked about the possible Hartford Foundation for Public Giving playing a role. So I'm just that was just occurring to me while you were having this discussion. And I almost, I'm going to hesitate. I guess I'll try to comment briefly on the senior center director because I'm on the senior advisory committee and I've spoken during public speak for the past two or the last three months or something like that, as far as whether or not that committee still has a role. And I guess I'm going to make my comments more of a, I'll call it an observation. I know you're constrained by the amount of money that was approved by the Board of Finance and ultimately approved by the town. My inclination as a citizen is that it would be better to have a full-time director for several reasons. It seems to have been described as the previous, the initial director, Tess, as needing, she was working, from what I've read, I don't remember exactly where, but from what I've read, that she was working beyond the part-time hours that she was hired to work. It's my understanding that Haley is saying much the same thing. And the question on aging seems to be leaning towards that. So again, that's kind of an observation. I know you don't literally have the money to spend unless it can come from somewhere else and from the public. So that by now that we've obviously just begun this fiscal year. But it seems like it's being done incrementally. I agree with the idea of having somebody there in the evenings for the community and recreational aspect, and I don't have an answer for a division of hours or that kind of thing, but again, it just seems to me that this is being done a bit too incrementally. And again, to repeat, I know you're constrained by what's in the budget this year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Did I miss anyone? Okay, item sixteen, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Nick in that.
All right, Scott seconded. All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The vote was five nothing. Motion made by Jeff Murray and seconded by Scott Person. Everybody, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Eric, thank you very much.